Going to be sort of in the seventies later tonight. Nice pool comparatively anyway, and also mostly clear ninety-one, the high tomorrow. And sunny and hot on Thursday as well. And two heading into it's like a nice weekend as well. Eighty-eight creates right now. Tonight on GBH2, watch the first episode of Native America. The first astronomers, the first builders, the first people of the Americas. Find out how we did this now and change the world on Native America. United States.
Everyone.
Good evening.
In accordance with the requirements of the open meeting law, please be advised that this meeting is being recorded and broadcast live over the Lunenburg Public Access Channel on Facebook Live on the Public Access Facebook page and will be uploaded to the Lunenburg Access YouTube channel within twenty-four hours after the meeting has concluded. If you would like to join tonight's meeting for public comment only by Zoom, you can do so on your computer, phone, or smart device. Tonight's webinar ID is nine zero nine one seven four zero three four seven. If you wish to join the Zoom by phone, you can do so by dialing eight 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 four seven five four four nine nine. And once again, the webinar ID is nine zero nine one seven four zero three four seven. The agenda lists all topics which may be discussed at this meeting and are those reasonably anticipated by the chair. Votes may be taken as a result of these discussions. Not all items listed may in fact be discussed, and other items not listed may also be brought up for discussion to the extent permitted by the open meeting law. Do we have any public comment from the board this evening?
None.
None. I will say as an aside, I'm glad that Henri did what it did, which was to Lunenburg, which is basically nothing except rain, and I don't think many people are complaining about that, so. Although I did get a lot of alerts on my phone about tornadoes. Glad we didn't have those either. Any public comment from the public? Also, no. Any announcements?
No announcements.
No announcements. We have a seven oh five, but before we do that, let's jump to ratification of town manager's appointment of a full-time patrol officer, Joel Ortega, to be effective December fifth, twenty twenty-one if approved tonight. Madam Town Manager.
Just like to ask the police chief to come up.
Thank you, Madam Town Manager, and through you, Mr. Alonso. Thank you for having us tonight. And like I mentioned earlier, it's nice to be back in person. I missed the last one that, well, fortunately, I was on vacation, but it was it was nice. Glad to be in front of you to present Officer Joel Ortega. We were before you in, I believe, in February to appoint him as a reserve officer. Let me give you a little bit of background on him. He graduated from the NPTC Reserve Intermittent Academy last year in June. He successfully completed a background investigation, pre-employment physical, and a psychological examination. Joel has completed the department's two hundred and fifty hours of field training in relatively short period of time. He is a resident of Pittsburgh, graduate of Lemus High School. He's also a graduate of Mount Wausau Community College and has an associate's degree of science in criminal justice. Joel speaks two languages fluently, English and Spanish. When we brought him before you as a reserve officer to be appointed, we talked about his background, and through his background, we found that he was a very dedicated, honest, and a well-thought-of person. One of the things that was told to me and told to my background investigator that he was one of the best humans on the planet. Having seen him work with us and being a part of our department so far, I would have to concur with that. I put in my letter to the board and to the town manager that every time he walks in the building, he has an infectious smile, and it just brings just a positive attitude every time he walks through that door, and it resonates with everybody he's around. As of now, he is, we are asking that he be appointed December fifth, the day before the academy is the start. To this point in his career, he has lived up to every expectation that we thought of him and that we we anticipated from him. He participates in everything we ask. He is always volunteering to help. He participated in the barbecue that we have for the seniors. He also participated in the Memorial Day service hosted by Mr. Jeffries. And he's readily available, whatever we ask, whether it's shifts, prisoner watches, details, he always helps out. He's a pleasure to have around. I'm excited to see what he is going to do in his career, and I would ask that you ratify the appointment.
Thank you. Would you like to say some words?
Yeah, I just want to say I want to say thank you for this opportunity. I can't wait to grow in this department, and I thank you so much.
Thank you. Any questions for the chief or for the applicant?
No questions.
No. Any comments?
Comments? Just want to say thank you.
Gracias. Thank you.
For coming aboard. Not an easy job these days, so very, very proud that you stepped forward and heard all kinds of good things about you.
Yeah.
Looking forward to seeing more. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you as well for stepping forward and for the contribution you have, and it's always comforting to hear when the chief gives such glowing comments and hearing how you've integrated well into the force. So that's excellent.
Thank you.
This is exciting.
I agree with everything that was said and high words of praise from the chief and the department. It's always interesting to see how people react when people speak of them that way. So that gives a good insight into somebody's character as well. But obviously, coming from just being appointed in the recent past to reserve officer, to be appointed a full-time officer is an excellent progress, and obviously, people think very highly of you, and because they do, I do as well. So I will entertain a motion regarding the appoint or the ratification of the appointment of, now, I heard the chief say Joel, is that how you pronounce it?
Yeah.
Okay, so Joel Ortega to full-time patrol officer effective December fifth, twenty twenty-one.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None. Congratulations and good luck.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, it's seven oh five. We have the Finance Director's FY twenty twenty-one Fourth Quarter Financial Report.
And I have more good news, so.
You have what?
I have more good news, so we'll just keep the good news rolling.
I like good news.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Okay, I'm just going to give you a quick summary of where we ended fiscal year twenty one at the close of the fiscal year on June thirtieth, twenty twenty-one. On the revenue side, total collections for FY twenty-one were forty-four million, two-hundred-and-fifty-two-thousand, fifty dollars, and that actually exceeded our estimates by two-point-two percent or nine-hundred-and-thirty-five-thousand, one dollars. The summary for that dollar amount is made up from several categories. The first one is local receipts, and for our local receipts, we exceeded our estimates by nineteen-point-two-six percent or five-hundred-and-ninety-thousand, five-hundred-and-sixteen dollars. There were only three of the fourteen categories that are in our local receipt estimates that were below what was estimated, and those were fines and forfeits, which were thirteen-thousand, nine-hundred-and-fifty dollars below what we estimated or fifty-one percent. Departmental revenue other, which is our ambulance receipts, those were below our estimate by eight-thousand-two-hundred-and-thirty-seven dollars or three-point-one-four percent, and investment income was twenty-seven-thousand, three-hundred-and-fifty dollars below our estimate or forty-three-point-four-six percent below. Some of the reasons for the investment income obviously were a result of what happened with the pandemic and probably on the other ones as well, because a lot of things changed during the year because of that. But on the good side, every one of our local receipt categories exceeded estimates with the exception of the three that I mentioned. Of interest in those categories is motor vehicle size, which, let me see here, exceeded our estimates by three-hundred-and-seven-thousand, one-hundred-and-fifty-eight dollars. We also had penalties and interest, and that exceeded our estimate by a hundred-and-four-thousand, five-hundred-and-fourteen dollars. And miscellaneous non-recurring exceeded our estimates by ninety-eight-thousand, fifty-five dollars. I think some of the reason why we saw the increases that we saw is at the time that we set the budget for FY twenty-one, we level funded our local receipts, not knowing what was going to happen at the time with everything that was going on with the pandemic, and so we were very conservative with those estimates, and as a result, we exceeded our local receipt estimates by five-hundred-and-ninety-thousand, five-hundred-and-sixteen dollars. Another thing I'd like to point out is, as the town manager always says, these are elastic revenues and are very dependent on the economy, and also that any amounts that we receive above what we estimated will hopefully translate into free cash at the end of the year, and that free cash is usually used in the following year to fund our capital plan, transfers into our OPEB account, and transfers into our stabilization funds. One of the things I'd like to say is, we've been very fortunate over the years, over at least the last several years, to have free cash in order to fund our capital plan, and because of that, we've not had to do any borrowing, so we've saved significant money in interest costs that we would normally have paid years past because we didn't have the free cash in order to fund that plan. Taxes for the tax levy, net of our overlay, that was twenty-eight million, seven-hundred-and-seventy-six dollars, twenty-eight million, seven-hundred-and-seventy-six thousand, two-hundred-and-fifty dollars, and we received ninety-nine-point-seven percent of the estimate. We also received tax lien revenue in the amount of two-hundred-and-twenty-thousand, seven-hundred-and-seventy-four dollars, so as a result of that collection, our overall taxes, tax collection exceeded estimates by point-four-seven percent. On the state aid side, we received two-point-six-four percent more than what we estimated or two-hundred-and-forty-thousand, two-hundred-and-sixty dollars, and the primary reason for that increase was in FY twenty-one, we received a zoning incentive payment for the tri-town housing project in the amount of two-hundred-and-ten-thousand dollars, and we also got more than what we had original than what was on the cherry sheet for our Smart Growth School Cost Reimbursement or forty S funds by forty-four-thousand, three-hundred-and-forty-five dollars. On the expenditure side, the budgeted expenditures were forty-three million, three-hundred-and-seventeen-thousand, forty-eight dollars, and we actually expended ninety-seven percent of that budget. The balance at the end of the year for all unexpended, unencumbered funds was one million, two-hundred-and-forty-nine-thousand, nine-hundred-and-fifty dollars, and I did provide you with a summary of the different appropriations and how much was closed out in each one. I'll just read the summaries for each category and what was closed out. So under total general government unclassified, which is mostly all of our insurances, there was a closeout of four-hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand, five-hundred-and-forty-five dollars. General government, which is basically all of our town offices, there was a closeout of a hundred-and-sixteen-thousand, thirteen dollars. Central purchasing, there was a closeout of ten-thousand, four-hundred-and-twelve dollars. For total protection, which includes police, fire, building inspector, all of our inspectors, there was a closeout of ninety-thousand, two-hundred-and-eighty-eight dollars. For health and sanitation, there was a closeout of twenty-one dollars and sixty-five cents. For the DPW, there was a closeout of sixty-seven-thousand, seven-hundred-and-thirty-three dollars. Facilities and buildings, sixty-six-thousand, one-hundred-and-forty-three dollars. The recycling program, seven-hundred-and-sixty-eight dollars. The total assistance, which is council on aging, our veterans administration and veterans benefits, there was a closeout of thirty-two-thousand, four-hundred-and-seventy-three dollars. The schools' total closeout was four-hundred-and-ninety-one-thousand, one-hundred-and-twenty-seven dollars, and the library was eight-thousand, three-hundred-and-seventy-one dollars. So as I said, the total appropriation closeouts at the close of FY twenty-one was one million, three-hundred-and-eight-thousand, eight-hundred-and-ninety-three dollars, and then we also had state assessments, which exceeded our estimates by fifty-nine-thousand, nine-hundred-and-eighty-four dollars. We had a closeout in our tax title account of forty-one dollars and twenty cents. So the total of all of that is one million, two-hundred-and-forty-nine-thousand, nine-hundred-and-fifty With that being said, I did a calculation of what I think our free cash will be at the close of FY twenty-one, and my estimate at this point in time is two million, six-hundred-and-seventy-five-thousand. That is an increase of eight-hundred-and-seventy-one-thousand dollars over our certified free cash for the close of FY twenty. And when I was looking at this too, that when I originally was looking at the closeout of FY twenty, it seemed to me like the like the appropriation closeouts were high, so I just looked back into FY twenty, and at the close of FY twenty, we closed out one million, two-hundred-and-forty-two-thousand, and for twenty-one, we closed out one million, two-hundred-and-forty-nine-thousand. So those numbers were pretty constant from FY twenty to FY twenty-one. One of the things that we really did exceed estimates on were our revenues, and like I said, I think a lot of that was when when COVID originally happened, there were things like they pushed back the dates that penalties and interest would be charged on tax bills, motor vehicle bills, and that sort of thing. So at the end of June of FY twenty is when everything that, there was a timeframe from, I think it was like March to June, where everything was put on hold, and then we were allowed to collect the penalties and interest going back to when the original date was due. So I think we realized a lot of that revenue in FY twenty-one. And then, like I said, when we put together the budget for FY twenty-one, we were very conservative with our local receipt estimates, not knowing what was going to happen as a result of the pandemic, and I do have to say, we fared very well. So, I mean, it's an it's an eight-hundred-thousand-dollar, it's about a little over eight-hundred-thousand-dollar increase that I estimate our free cash will be certified at over FY twenty.
How did the CARES Act impact any of these numbers?
The CARES Act, well, I mean, there were probably expenses that if we didn't have the CARES Act fund, would have been borne by the budgets, so we would have seen a much lower appropriation closeout at the end of the year. But, I mean, all of those COVID costs that we could consider eligible under the CARES Act or FEMA funding, we moved over to those funds.
I know, I realize that, but did you have a, did you quantify that, how much that was?
Well, between the two accounts, it, I think it would have been about between three and four hundred thousand, I would say.
Okay.
Because we've received a portion of the CARES Act, we've actually received more from the state under the CARES Act than what we've expended, but we're still waiting for reimbursement from FEMA for the federal side of things. So.
Okay.
Yeah, that number would have been reduced significantly had those funding sources not been available to us.
And on the revenue side, that one-time payment for the tri-town housing project is two-hundred-and-ten-thousand.
Yeah.
Loan, so that that's a one-time benefit.
Yeah, definitely, yeah.
Excellent. Anybody have any questions for the Finance Director? Anytime you want to come and give us good news like that.
No, I mean, and I knew way back that things were looking very optimistic for us as far as the closeout, but this was even better than what I had anticipated at the end of the last quarter, so good news.
Well, I think it's good to put in conservative financial practices, and this is a good example of that, so.
Oh, I agree with the local receipts a hundred percent, to be as conservative as possible with those, because that directly translates to free cash that we're able to fund our capital plan with. And like I said, in years past, and you know, because you've been around as long as I have, we've, you know, we've had to borrow for a lot of our larger ticket items and bear those interest costs, and we've been fortunate enough over the last several years that we haven't had to do that, so.
Yeah. So I will say publicly what I've said to and the whole team, the whole board here has said privately and otherwise, I mean, I appreciate the work that you and the town manager and your teams have done in putting, you know, Lunenburg in a very solid financial position and maintaining that so year after year, so thank you.
Yeah, because I mean, I hear from other communities, and Lunenburg is doing very well, so.
Thank you, Karen.
Thank you, Karen.
You're welcome. Have a good night.
You too. Seven fifteen, we have a joint meeting with the Housing Authority to conduct an interview and vote to fill a vacant Housing Authority Tenant Board Member seat. Mr. Stanley Randall of one thirty-one White Street. Is the Housing Authority here?
I think Mr. Randall is in the back row.
Excuse me?
Mr. Randall, I think, is in the back row.
There's only two of you.
So we don't have a warrant, so we just.
Well, are they elected?
It's your appointment.
It's a joint appointment. Oh, no, it's our appointment, it's a joint meeting. Okay, gotcha. So, Mr. Randall, would you like to come forward and introduce yourself, please?
Yes, I'm Stan Randall, and I live at one thirty-one White Street, apartment D four.
Can you tell us why you want to be on the Housing?
I lived in Lunenburg for thirty-six years. I lived down at the housing now for almost two and a half years. I see what's going on there, and I have a lot of concerns about the tenants there. They become my friends, I live with these people, I hear what's going on, I see what's going on, and there's a lot of dissension and a lot of animosity going on, and they're being mistreated, in my opinion, and yet they're being humiliated, they're being mistreated and degraded and intimidated and and being retaliated against if they say things, and there's a lot of disorganization at the housing going on, and I've decided I've had enough and it's time for somebody to stand up and be a voice for these people. And this is why I applied, because nobody else applied. And, you know, I had twenty years in police work, sixteen years in the Air Police Department, four years in the service. I know how to organize people and manage people and something, you know, it's just I don't think the town of Lunenburg is getting the dollars worth down there, and there's a lot of things, funny things going on, and I'll give you one example, and I don't want to take a lot of time on the board, because recently, after the COVID ended, and they reopened the community building, maintenance had the bright idea of installing water-saving faucets on the laundry sink, the bathroom utility sink, and the kitchen sink. That's the ones where you put your hand under and the water comes on. Well, they did that, and the plumber, I don't know why, it's beyond me, you couldn't get any hot water, you had to stand there for ten minutes, and you still were not getting no hot water, running the water. And so I brought it to the attention of the board, and I was told that they provide water. I said, you're supposed to provide water that's warm and hot. I said, it's supposed to be a certain degree, and I said, we just went through a year of washing hands and sanitary over COVID, and now you're going to tell us we gotta wash our hands with cold water? It doesn't make sense to me. So, you know, so what happened is they had to call the plumber back, and they determined they had to put in a new tank, a water tank or something, and till this day, it still doesn't work properly, because I put my hand on the faucet checking them, and it was five minutes before you got lukewarm water. I know it's not a hundred and ten degrees to a hundred and thirty degrees, and it's just not acceptable, and the town of Lunenburg is being paid for, paying for this stuff. It's just, I could go on and on, and I don't want to bother the board, but I'm upset with it, and I feel terrible to see that the residents that I live with, they feel uneasy, they're intimidated, they feel like they're going to be retaliated if they make any complaints. This is, this is not the way that we should be ending our lives. I'll be seventy-three Friday. I don't need this aggravation, but somebody has to stand up for these people, and I decide I'm going to stand up.
I appreciate, thank you. Thank you for standing up and for explaining what's going on. Anybody have any questions for Mr. Randall?
I appreciate you standing.
Not to interrupt you, but I know that it's a new experience for me, and that I'm going to have to have some comprehensive training through the Department of the Housing and Community Development, along with the King Organization. I don't know what my role will be, but I know one thing, I'm going to be a voice. I'm not going to be a stamp man, you know, and I'm not afraid to talk up to these people. If something's wrong, it's got to be straightened out.
I've just met you tonight, and I already believe you that that's going to be true. Seriously, I, and any training, of course, talk to the Housing Authority directly, and any any assistance you may need for getting people trained if you're not getting the resource.
By law, they have.
Okay. Mr. Jeffries?
Yeah, I appreciate you standing up. It was a pleasure meeting with you. I think that was about six weeks ago or so, and several other residents who live who live down there with you, and I understand, you know, I've sent several emails to the Housing Authority as well as to Mr. Mr. Gold, who's the head of, who's contracted to provide the services, and I think that there's cause for concern. I think there's a lot of cause for concern. I think I've done a pretty good job of documenting that for the Housing Authority of what my conversations revealed, so that way, as members, you can pick that up, given the separation of our duties and responsibilities. But I appreciate you standing up. I have no doubt that this is what's necessary, and I'm also grateful, you know, to the town manager for posting this vacancy, you know, looking into the vacancies that exist on the Housing Authority Board, so that way we get a fully-staffed board to be able to look into some of the concerns. So thank you.
Thank you.
So I entertain a motion on the appointment of Mr. Stanley Randall of one thirty-one White Street to the Housing Authority Tenant Board Member seat.
Yeah, I'm, I move to report Stanley Randall to the Housing Authority Tenant Board Member Seat for a term to expire in two thousand twenty-three.
Second. Well, any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None. Please see the town clerk at your earliest convenience to be sworn in.
Yes, sir.
And then work with the Housing Authority members to find out when the next meetings are and start that training. Thank you. Okay, seven thirty on the nose. Look at this. It's like a Swiss clock here. A meeting with town council regarding the forty B comment letter in response to the site approval application from Pondview Commons LLC. Mr. Costa. And Madam Town Manager, I don't know how either one of you want to introduce this.
Yep. So as the board is aware, and hopefully, the public through many public announcements, we have a comment letter that we have to submit to Mass Housing by September second. So tonight was, time was set aside to meet with town council to review the components of our comment letter. The deadline for comments from any residents or other boards were due yesterday, so we have a full complement. We've received twenty-one resident comments, we've received eleven. We've received 21 resident comments, we've received a letter from the Planning Board, two letters from Hickory Hills Land Owners Incorporated, two reports from the police chief, a letter from the Water District, and a letter from the Sewer Commission. So we have a full range of commentary and concerns from both public and appropriate staff and boards.
So I guess, take us through what the next steps are.
I will, so, thank you, Ms. Chairman, members of the board, Adam Costa, Town Council. So for your benefit and for the benefit of those in attendance and the viewers, as you know, I provided a 40B workshop presentation just about two weeks ago to members of your board and others who wish to attend, and I gave an explanation of the 40B process, sort of, from soup to nuts, and so we are at the, we are at the beginning of that process. 40B process starts with an applicant making a request or an application to a project subsidy, in this case for the Pondview Commons Project, that subsidy is the Massachusetts Housing Finance Agency, often referred to as Mass Housing. And when that application's made to Mass Housing, there is a requirement that Mass Housing provide notice to the municipality of a potential incoming Chapter 40B comprehensive permit application, and the municipality is given an opportunity, typically 30 days, to provide public comment on the application. And as I had discussed during the 40B workshop, it is not your only bite at the apple, in fact, it is barely a bite at the apple at all. Many communities don't even take the opportunity to offer much by way of public comment, and so I commend the town manager and staff for being as responsive as you have been in soliciting comments and compiling comments from various boards, commissions, committees, departments, officials, and even, even independent districts concerning this particular proposal. The process now is to formally compile those various comment letters that you just heard referenced. I spoke to the town manager yesterday, we had a meeting to discuss what's been received so far, she is going to work to put together a form of a cover letter that summarizes the various comments that have been received, I provided her with a format that I've used before in other communities. I'm also working on a letter of my own that will address some of the legal issues that might be associated with this potential application, and all of that information would be submitted by next week's deadline, I think it was Wednesday or Thursday?
Thursday, the second.
Will be submitted by the 2nd of September to Mass Housing. And when Mass Housing receives those comments, it will consider those comments in light of the 40B scheme, will consider those comments in light of the application that's before it, and will make a decision whether or not to issue what's referred to as a project eligibility letter. So as to not get the town's hopes up, I know that, you know, 40B is a swear word in many communities, and 40Bs are concerning, because the nature of 40B is that it tends to be much more dense than its surroundings, and is often in areas that are cause for concern among nearby residents who may live in less dense housing. You know, with that said, these project subsidies routinely issue these project eligibility letters. These are preliminary determinations, they don't bind the town to issue a comprehensive permit, they don't bind the subsidizing agency to issue final approval after a comprehensive permit issues, if a comprehensive permit issues. And so, the purview of the subsidizing agency, the scope of its review at this stage in the process is very limited, it looks to the materials that it's received to determine whether the entity that is proposing the Chapter 40B project is a qualified entity. They look to the nature of the project to determine whether there's sufficient land area, whether there are critical concerns, and what you and I may consider critical, and what the subsidizing agency might consider critical are not necessarily one and the same thing, but they will look for what they consider to be critical concerns that might prevent their endorsement, their determination that this particular applicant, this particular project is eligible. So, in far more cases, and I don't have the statistics, but I would probably say maybe nine out of every 10 cases, project eligibility letters do issue after applications have been made to project subsidies. So, again, we've made a significant effort to compile, compile comments that we hope that the subsidizing agency will take into consideration, and if it deems appropriate, reject the issuance of a PEL, or if it deems appropriate, issue a PEL, but do so with conditions that require the applicant, or expressly require the applicant to address the various concerns that have been raised as part of the permitting, the remaining permitting process before the Zoning Board of Appeals, and then back before the subsidizing agency for final approval. So that's where we are with the process. What I would expect, once we submit our response, our comment letter by next Thursday's deadline, I would expect that we'll wait a period of time, could be 30 days, could be 60 days, for the subsidizing agency to process that comment letter, or to fully process the application that prompted it, and then to determine whether it's going to issue that letter of project eligibility. And if it does issue that letter of project eligibility, that letter will go to the applicant, the town will receive notice that it has issued, and then the ball is in the applicant's court. The applicant would then compile its comprehensive permit application, which consists of many of the same documents that it has already compiled for its application to Mass Housing for preliminary determination of applicability. Some applicants turn that around in a matter of a couple of weeks, and two weeks after the PEL issues, you have an application for a comprehensive permit submitted to your ZBA. I would say the norm is that the turnaround isn't quite so quick, 30 days, maybe 60 days, for the applicant to compile whatever additional information is necessary to put it in the proper format and to submit it to the Zoning Board of Appeals, and that kicks off the more formal permitting process before the ZBA, with a public hearing that would open, notice that would issue to parties in interest, abutters, abutters to abutters, or then 300 feet of the project site, and then those succession of public hearings, when the board can fully vet and evaluate the application, and after it's comfortable with the information that it's received, make an informed decision to either grant or deny the comprehensive permit. That process, by regulation, can take up to 180 days from the date of opening of the public hearing until the date of closing of the public hearing, that's, you know, plus the 30 days at the front end from the date of receipt of the application until the date that the public hearing is opened, and then depending upon the speed with which an applicant cooperates or provides additional information, there are routinely extensions of that deadline. So it's not unusual for a comprehensive permit process from the date that the ZBA receives an application to run somewhere in the vicinity of six to 12 months. I've had them go as long as two years, or longer in one instance. I've had them get approved much more quickly when they're simpler projects and not as controversial. So that all remains to be seen, but, you know, we started the process with that workshop a couple of weeks ago, I have had an opportunity to have a preliminary meeting with the Chair of your Zoning Board of Appeals, just to discuss, you know, nothing really of substance, but process and procedure a bit in terms of how the process unfolds. He's familiar with that process, he's been the Chair of that board for a number of years, my understanding is that two other members of that board have been members of that board for a number of years, maybe three, and they've actually presided over two, I think, three other 40B applications in their years on that board. So they're generally familiar with the 40B process, that of course says nothing about this particular project, but they know, they know the process and the procedure, which is, which is helpful.
Now, if you wanted to go through, so how the format of the letter that Attorney Costa and I discussed would be categories of concerns, so preliminarily, like traffic safety, pedestrian safety, accessibility, project size, access and egress from site, sewer infrastructure, water infrastructure, legal concerns, these are in no priority order, stormwater considerations, open space, unique environmental harm, so those are the main categories right now that we started with.
Yeah, as the town manager is forwarded to the board, the letters from the public and the various boards, you know, I'm assuming that we would compile the, you know, the important highlights, and I guess those categories probably do a good job, I can't speak if it's an extensive job, because maybe there are other categories that weren't there, but certainly those are the major ones, that that's what we would do, and bring out those various points for all the various reasons. Can you provide a breakdown of the letters that you got from the boards and everybody, with the general consensus? Was there, was there any that were for the project?
No.
Okay.
And of course, it's, that's a simple question and a simple answer, but the question may not be as simple, and the answer may not be as simple. So, I think I've read, maybe not every one of the letters, but I think I've read many of the letters, and while I probably would characterize most as being against the project, many of them have been focused on particular concerns that are within the purview of the officer or the department, so it's not, you know, yea or nay on the project, it's, "We have this concern." And so if that concern were addressed, maybe that would be support for the project, maybe it wouldn't be, I don't know, but it's, they're focused on the areas of expertise of these various boards and commissions and committees, so what the town manager has attempted to do, not that I want to speak for you, Heather, but it is, is just characterize and categorize as best she can, consistent with the format I provided, the topics that have been addressed by these various letters, but we're going to provide the letters themselves as an attachment. So, the hope would be, the expectation would be, that Mass Housing is going to do what it ought to do, which is if it's going to provide an opportunity for the town and the town's people to offer comment, it's going to read all those comments. It's not going to just read the cover letter and then say, "Okay, we get the gist of it," and then move on. But the cover letter does provide an opportunity for the town to really highlight, especially where there were some common themes. So, you know, there was one or two letters maybe that referenced stormwater, there were maybe a few more letters that referenced traffic, there were several letters that referenced concerns about utility services available at the property. So, we do want to highlight those common themes, and the fact that they are common themes is really telling, I think, and ought to be telling to Mass Housing, that the town has significant concerns about the appropriateness of the site, and I don't want to speak for your board, but at least the sense I'm getting from the letters I've received is that many agencies, many boards or departments or committees of the town have serious concerns about the appropriateness of this site for this type, this style, this size of development.
I don't know what else we can go on this topic tonight, aside from this review, if anybody has any questions, or?
No questions.
I have one question.
Mr. Jeffries?
Mass Housing is, is the subsidizing, subsidizing agency here, which, and I probably should have asked this question when you gave your presentation, I didn't think of it then. If Mass Housing denies the project eligibility, my understanding is that they're providing funding, can they go to one of the other subsidizing agencies and reapply?
They can, so it's not, and so the funding that Mass Housing provides is not the traditional funding, as you might think a lender would provide, they're not necessarily providing dollars to allow the project to be constructed, but they're facilitating the ability of this project to qualify for the sorts of financing options that would be necessary to develop an affordable housing project, which might otherwise be difficult to finance because of the nature of these types of projects. They're providing the mechanisms, the framework within which the 40B project can get approved, the regulatory agreement that will ensure that there are limitations on the profitability of the project to the developer, that will ensure that there is an affordability component for a minimum of 30 years, if not in perpetuity. If they're denied a letter of project eligibility, nothing would ever prevent them from making an application to a different subsidy to seek the same sort of a letter. I will tell you that in my experience, I've not seen many instances where an applicant that is denied, and again, I've not seen very many instances where an applicant is denied subsidy approval, but in those instances, I've not known that applicant to then have greater success going to another subsidy. There's only a handful of subsidies, you're dealing with Mass Housing, you're dealing with MHP, if it's a friendly project, meaning that you get the town's endorsement, the select board's endorsement before you proceed, you can go directly to the Department of Housing and Community Development, and it will act as the subsidizing agency, but with those, other than those few that I've referenced, there aren't many other subsidizing agencies for these sorts of comprehensive permit projects.
Thank you.
Is there anything else you wanted to discuss here?
Is the board meeting again before, between now and your deadline on Thursday?
We don't have a scheduled meeting.
Right.
So if I could make a suggestion through you, Mr. Chairman, I would just suggest that the board vote to authorize, I presume you've seen the letters that have been incoming, that many of them have been circulated, that you just authorize the town manager to prepare a letter, a letter of transmittal, a cover letter, that summarizes the general content of those letters, including those letters with the cover letter, and make the submittal by, or in advance of next Thursday's deadline. I think that that would be proper protocol, just so there's no question that the select board authorized that action to occur.
Thank you. So I would entertain such a motion, that the board, as advised by Town Council, the board authorized the town manager to compile the submissions for public comment, and to work with Town Council, creating a, a cover letter in submission of those public comments. Any further discussion on that motion? Let's do a roll call on this one. Mr. Marino?
Aye.
Mr. Dwyer?
Aye.
Mr. Franco?
Aye.
Mr. Jeffries?
Aye.
And an aye for me.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Excellent, thank you. Let's jump down for a second, because we have people waiting in the audience, let's do the renewal of the annual earth removal permit for 1325 Mass Avenue. So this was held over from last week, where the applicant, or the current permit holder has asked for change in operational hours from 8:00 AM to 4:30 PM, and changing the Monday to Friday to 7:00 AM to 4:00 PM, and to add four hours on Saturday, 8:00 AM to noon, with no trucking of material, just onsite work at the site, again, 1325 Massachusetts Avenue. This was sent and noticed to interested parties, so I will open it up if anybody wants to speak to it. Please.
Hi, I'm Dawn Proctor Johnson, I'm Dan's sister, I'm here representing Dan and Jean Proctor, owners of the property. In case there are any questions, he apologizes that he couldn't be here tonight because he was offered Red Sox tickets for him and his entire family, so he went to the Red Sox, but he asked me to stand in, in case there were any questions and anything that I could speak on behalf of him. He just wanted to say, obviously, nothing's changed since last week, and hopefully you'll see fit to vote in favor of what he's asked for.
Well, we did hold it over for this week, so that we would hear if anybody had objections to these, and what their objections might be, so does anybody have objections to this request? Is there anybody?
Yes, she just unmuted herself. Pamela Insaldi.
Say again.
I just actually have a quick question.
Yes.
Last week, it was suggested by the Vice Chair that perhaps a compromise for Mr. Proctor asking for Saturday, that he would be amenable to change the hours to 9:00 to 12:00. So I guess my question is, is that off the table?
No, I don't think it's off the table, and I think, I think the applicant suggested that they were amenable to that, with that change.
I thought it was 9:01.
No, 9:12.
Do you know, if you are representing?
I thought he said 9:01, but he would, you know, it's not going to be every Saturday, it's just when he needs to be there, so he would like this to move forward and have this be done tonight, so.
Sure.
I have no opposition to one.
What?
I heard 9:12 last week.
Yeah, I thought I heard 9:12 last week as well, but I don't have any, if certain members remember this being 1 o'clock, I don't.
I do, I personally do not think it should go into the afternoon. I think that 9:12 seems very reasonable as a compromise, because originally he asked for 8:12.
Correct. Mr. Dwyer?
My recollection is that he wanted to keep the 8:12, but he said he would refrain from moving equipment until 9:00. So he could be on there setting stuff up, you know, shooting grades and things like that on the site, but then between 9:00 and 12:00, that's when he would actively be moving equipment and working.
Correct.
Was that correct?
But no, but no trucks?
Yeah.
There will be no trucks on Saturday.
Right.
Just be a.
Okay, I just want to be clear about that.
Yeah, that was in the initial request, that there's no trucks on Saturday at all, but he'll have site work, like bulldozers or excavators that may be moving things around. But, again, if we do 9:12 for any equipment work, he can certainly be there earlier than that, because he can be on the property since he owns it anytime he wants, so.
I reached out to the Planning Board last week, not the Planning Board, to the Planning Office, to Adam Bernie and to Marjorie, Adam was on vacation, so I spoke with Marjorie, who's administrative support. Adam was on vacation, so I spoke with Marjorie, who's administrative support for the planning department. And my question was what the normal construction hours are in town when they approve, when the planning board makes approvals, what they condition most work to be. And the answer is 7:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., Monday through Saturday. And that they make adjustments to that depending on the location, such as a more dense area will likely be put between 8:00 a.m. and 5:00 p.m. So with the understanding that construction occurs generally in town within the times that are being recommended, I don't have an issue with the 7:30 to 4:00 proposed during the weekdays. I don't have an issue with the eight to 12, or even offering an extension to that to be eight to one o'clock on Saturdays, with the understanding that equipment would not be used until 9:00 a.m.
Okay, that went beyond what the request was, but, okay. From what I'm hearing, and I'll just try to make this succinct, that without objection, there's 7:30 a.m. to 4:30 p.m., which is what the applicant is requesting on weekdays, is okay. And if we make equipment operation 9:00 a.m. to noon on Saturday, that would appease everyone, and I think that would be fine.
Yeah, quick question, Mr. Alonso. I thought I just heard you say the new hours during the week till 4:30 in the afternoon.
No, four.
I, four, that's 7:30 to 4:00.
Correct. 7:30 to 4:00.
Yeah, okay.
Anybody else have any questions about this? I would entertain a motion with that regard to that. So we are looking to approve the earth removal permit with changes in hours, weekdays 7:30 a.m. to 4:00 p.m., and on adding Saturday hours, 9:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m.
So moved.
I have a second.
Second.
All right.
With noting that between the hours of eight and nine, he can do other work, notwithstanding the use of...
Yeah, but it's his property, so he can be on the property anytime he wants. He doesn't need approval for that.
I just want to make that clear, though.
Yeah, okay.
So moved.
You asked, Mr. Chair, if there was any opposition to what's being proposed. I'm not sure if anyone wants to offer any comments about what's being proposed. That's not necessarily oppositional.
Okay. Anybody else have any comments about what's proposed? Okay, we're ready to vote. So all those in favor, it was moved by Mr. Franco, seconded by Mr. Marino. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? None. Okay. So let's, is this on here? These hours? So change hours to this and that. Okay. We have to put this on here somewhere? Someone assign it if it has to be reprinted? Yeah, so those have to be, oh, this one's fine.
It says eight to nine.
Do we have to print it?
That's fine.
Okay.
You put the one in there.
Hmm?
It'd be the second one. That was the original.
Oh, sorry. Okay. Ratification of town manager's appointment of a temporary veterans agent, David Lozon Jr.
So a little bit about David, he's been helping veterans for the last 12 years. He's currently a part-time veterans agent in West Boylston. He previously worked at the Recovery Center of America and the New Patriots Veterans Outreach Center in Fitchburg as their operations director before it closed. And he has his Veteran Service Officer certification and training in veterans mediations. And he served in the Army, ending his career in the military as a staff sergeant in 2009. So this is a temporary position as we look for a long-time replacement.
Any questions for the town manager?
No questions.
And I would entertain a motion of ratifying the town manager's appointment of a temporary veterans agent, David Lozon Jr., until such time as we fill a full-time position, or permanent replacement, I should say.
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? None.
Thank you.
All right. Town manager report.
Shorter report than last week. So I'll start off with the vacancies. There are two vacancies on Architectural Preservation District Commission, one citizen at large and one representative from the Historical Commission. One vacancy on the Bylaw Review Committee. One vacancy for a citizen at large appointed by the town moderator for the Capital Planning Committee. Two vacancies on the Commissioner of Trust Funds, which is a joint appointment between the Commissioner of Trust Funds and the Select Board until the next annual town election. Multiple vacancies on the Economic Development Committee. The, one vacancy on the Senior Work Off Program Committee, and one associate vacancy on the Zoning Board of Appeals. Interested persons can find the application form on the town website, complete them, and return them to the Select Board's office. Updates from the DPW, one on the Pleasant Street Bridge. The DPW director has worked with our engineer to address some safety concerns, including the gap between the face of the rail and the edge of the pavement and the height of the bridge railing. To add additional protection on the height of the railing, a six-foot fence will be installed on the backside of the railing that would provide pedestrians with a more comfortable railing height, and the gap will be addressed with a two-by-ten pressure-treated wood. Complete Streets sidewalk ramps. The DPW director has asked our engineer to review all the sidewalk ramps that have been installed so far as part of the Complete Streets project. He and I both have concerns that were also independently raised by a resident that we would like to have reviewed as far as their ADA compliance. So as soon as we have those inspected, I will provide the board an update. Donation of commercial freezer and refrigeration units. Dave McDonald has secured a donation to the town for a large commercial freezer and commercial refrigeration unit that will be delivered to the TC Passios Kitchen. These units will be used by the Lions Club Food Pantry once they relocate this space. So this will, currently there are two units there. They're 20 years old and haven't been serviced recently, so that these will be good replacements for those units. So thank you, Mr. McDonald. IT Director position. The IT Director, Steve Melandrinos, resigned from his position last week due to personal reasons. This position is currently split between the town and school, with 30% town, 70% school. And we have temporarily transitioned tasks over to the relevant staff and are managing this internally at this point. I'll keep the board updated with any changes going forward. In other announcements, the last day that the town beach will be open will be Sunday, August 29th. The Lunenburg Farmers Market on the Ritter Lawn is held every Sunday until October 10th, 10:00 a.m. till 12:30 p.m. And the Fall Special Town Meeting will be Tuesday, November 16th, at 7:00 p.m. at the middle school, high school. And warrant articles can be submitted to the town manager's office now until September 28th at 5:00 p.m.
Any questions for the town manager on the report? I will say just a couple of comments. So first of all, thank you also to Mr. McDonald for securing those, and thank you for the town manager and meeting with the Lions Club. And I think that the TC Passios is a much better solution for their food pantry than was the previous location. So I'm glad that all that is working well, and everybody knows that it's temporary, depending on what happens with the Passios building. On the Pleasant Street Bridge and the Complete Streets sidewalk ramps, I just have to comment that I don't understand how these engineered projects have these deficiencies where else somebody has to bring them to your attention, that we have to fix a, or fill in a gap with a bridge that just recently done with pressure-treated two-by-ten lumber and extend the railing, as if nobody knew that people were going to be walking over this bridge. Or with the sidewalk ramps that, you know, resident, several residents, but one in particular has noted that don't look like it meets the standards of ADA. We did the Complete Streets, and we did the sidewalks in large part, not solely for, but in large part, to address the ADA...
Accessibility.
Accessibility issues, and to have one not meet, or seemingly not meet, those codes seems to defeat the whole purpose. So I'm just marveling at whatever engineering is out there not fulfilling these jobs. Do they not know for what purpose these things are being built? It just seems to be, now, these aren't small oversights, these are like to the core of what they're building.
Do you want my opinion on that?
If you'd like to offer it.
No.
Okay, well...
Nobody wants to hear it.
I would hear it.
There you go, see? Lou would like to hear it. All right.
Were either of those projects considered complete at the time that the observations were made? Because there's usually a quality control check at the end of projects.
They weren't signed off on as complete.
Okay.
Yeah, so.
All right.
So it wasn't a complete, complete streets? It was just complete?
Yeah.
Because, you know, sometimes vendors make, I'm not making excuses. Vendors, you know, they knew what they were, vendors make mistakes.
Well, but, you know, again, there's, there's a lot of, a lot of spotlight on, let's say, the sidewalk project, this Complete Streets project. And the speculation was, well, this clearly, you know, this has all the workings of being a temporary fix until they do something more permanent. And so if they come back and say, no, that was the permanent one, you know, I question people's dedication to their job.
Yeah, I mean, what the engineer will come out and review is how it was built according to specifications and if it, you know, meets that, you know, the requirements of the specifications.
Yeah, and then they'll go back to the contractor and say, this is wrong, this is wrong. So it seems as if our intervention is prior to that point.
Yeah. But very appropriate to bring it to, yeah, their attention.
Well, I like to, I want to thank all the people, you know, at home who make these, who make these observations and bring them to our attention. I mean, not everybody who works in town can be everywhere, and we look to people to point out things and just say, hey, I'm not sure that this is anything, but can you look into this and address your concerns? That's how, you know, a lot of these things come to, come to light. It's just from, just people driving over, walking over someplace, seeing something. So thank you for those people who, who are submitting those observations for our review. And with a tone that says, hey, I'm not sure if this is right or if this is even finished, but I think people should know this. I think that, the tone of it is also very important. None of these were accusatory. They were just like, hey, I think there's an issue here that people may need to address. All right, so discussion of the Complete Streets project and the Main Street portion of the project.
So this agenda topic relates to the Upper Common and the, we discussed it at the last meeting, and a, what was thought to be a good compromise that came out of that meeting after reviewing the area again, found a, by removing the pine tree, which seems to be a consensus that we can replace it down the road with a smaller tree, because we're going to have to replace that tree anyways. We can lessen the impact to the garden, the exterior garden alongside Main Street, by going through more the center, right by the sign.
Okay, so that's similar to, similar to the original plan, but a slight modification?
Similar, it's kind of right in the middle.
Okay.
Right, it's between the two plans.
Yes.
Yes.
All right.
Yeah.
Great. I'm sure the Garden Club's very happy.
Have they been notified?
I believe so by Mr. Oliver.
Okay.
As he previously stated, you know, he'll work with them on removal of, and, you know, moving over shrubs or plants.
Right.
Can I just give you my police, ex-police chief's perspective on this? I think that's a good idea, and matter of fact, a lot of that stuff should be removed because that's an island theoretically, and it obstructs your vision going into those intersections. So I think it's a great idea. I would have suggested that last week, start getting rid of some of them trees. It's really, it can create a hazard out there more than anything, as much as I know people love trees and so forth and the beauty of it. But, you know, it's at an intersection, and it's a lot of intersecting streets right there. So I like the, I like that idea. It'll be much better.
It was also discussed that potentially, because the flagpole where it is now, when you fly the flag, especially if you fly it at half-mast, it gets caught in that tree, so we may, if we remove the pine tree, we actually may move the flagpole to where the pine tree is. It'd be much more visible and much more easy to light, because lighting is also a problem.
Yeah, I mean, that, that's not, it obstructed the flagpole, that's what I was just saying. You can't even see the flags on there.
Right.
I'd rather, that's not going to obstruct.
Yep, so that was what discussed too, so.
That's good.
Great.
Okay, discussion on the survey of boundaries on Townsend Harbor Road and Woodland Drive regarding the possible encroachments on Cowdery Conservation Property. So we discussed this briefly last week. We had gotten a quote for the surveying of the entire Cowdery.
I was, Mr. Chairman, I was confused by all this when I read it, I looked at the maps and so forth. This, this survey hasn't been done yet, right?
That is correct.
Because there was a, this letter from Town Council makes it sound like, where is it? Where did I see that?
I think it was from last October.
Yeah, we're, we are, in our letter from last October, we are, well, actually, two Octobers ago, we are, no, last October, yeah.
That's right.
We are asserting that that, they are encroaching, and there's a dispute between where the actual property lines are, which is what triggered a request from the Conservation Commission to do an actual survey of the property.
Yeah, I just skimmed over this, I didn't even see the date, but what confused me was, we're issuing a letter telling him to basically clean up his driveway and move everything out of there, but we don't really know. At the time, we didn't even know for sure that he was encroaching on the property. Now we're asking for a survey, so.
Well, that's not uncommon, because we assert where the property lines are. And if there's a discrepancy or somebody disputes it, then obviously the claiming party has to determine.
Well, yeah, no, I get that. I guess what I was thinking is that the property lines were shown from G, the, G...
G I S.
G I S, yeah. Which are not typically all that accurate, but, so, all right, I get it. I get what you're saying, though. You're still, based on that, you're asserting, but, yeah.
So...
So you answered my question, anyway.
I did or didn't?
No, you did.
Okay, good, all right. So I think the question was, we wanted to think about it, whether we surveyed the whole property at the price we were given. And Conservation indicated, and the Chair could not be here tonight, but indicated that they just wanted to do this property line for this...
192.
For 192 Townsend Harbor Road. And we said, well, for the price we're getting, why don't we survey the whole property? And I certainly leaned toward that, because the property, it would be nice to have a final determination, and we're not doing it for any other purpose other than now we'll know and we'll have these, these lines determined. Not for the purpose that there are, but there could be other encroachments on other properties that bore to the Cowdery as well.
Well, there was a second map here, too, is it?
Yeah, there were some, there were some possibilities, they said, yes.
Yeah, I mean, one of them, it looked like the line was practically going through the person's house. How could that be?
Well, I, I don't have an answer to that question.
No, I know, I'm just saying.
That's why we have surveyors.
Well, exactly. That's why I had G I S.
So I'm leaning toward approving the whole thing and get the whole Cowdery surveyed for that price.
Those boundaries, that, where there's encroachment, possible encroachment.
Yep. Well, and then there's a question of, do we want them staked or not? Well, and then there's a question of, do we want them staked or not?
Just to clarify what we're talking about, the, I don't see the quote in our drive, so which, what week was that, that we, that was last week?
Last week.
Yeah.
All right, so let me go back to the seventeen.
This is the original, this is the second quote.
Kevin, am I missing it?
It was...
I'm not seeing it.
Six thousand five hundred, I think, was the amount.
Yeah, I saw it too, but I don't, I'm having trouble finding it.
It was on the, under the town manager report.
Got it. Thank you.
Sixty-five hundred to perform a partial boundary survey of the three possible encroachments and an additional fifteen hundred that the property lines could be staked.
All right. So, so then the clarifying is that for eight thousand dollars, this is to survey the entire Cowdery?
No, no.
No, partial boundaries were the encroachments.
The partial boundaries were the three encroachments.
Possible encroachments.
Possible. Do we have any information on those other three encroachments?
Yes.
On those other two? Because everything is focused on one that we have in our drive. And I, I also want to just make a general comment that we have a legal letter that went out and...
My thirteenth.
I, I've noted before that I, you know, I, I take a little issue with us issuing a legal letter in October before we have a conversation with an owner, but that's neither here nor there and I do know that that was remedied and resolved. I, I'd like to get these legal letters that we're sending out if we're supposed to, you know, have some oversight over litigation. If I can also get a copy of them when we send them, that would be appreciated.
Those were forwarded to the board, I believe.
Yep.
I don't recall getting it, so I'll double-check that.
All right. I believe it was July thirteenth, as I referenced in my report.
I, I have a copy of the letter here. I guess what I'm saying is, the letter that we have is dated October the twenty-ninth of last year. And I, I'm saying that it would be nice to get it sooner when it's issued, you know, closer to when they're issued.
Yeah, and I was referring to the map. You wanted more information. We discussed it at the July thirteenth meeting and in the Google Drive is a, a map showing the...
Oh, the other two possible encroachments.
The other two possible encroachments.
Okay, thank you. You said that was July?
Thirteenth.
Thirteenth, thank you. Towns and Harbor folder?
Yes.
Is this what we're looking at?
Yep.
So those red lines.
Oh, that's why, because I'm colorblind, so I don't see red, like.
Ah.
All right. Just so I'm clear.
Here, from here to here.
Yep.
And here and here.
Got it. I'm always amazed that when people can see how, anyway. It all looks the same to me.
I know.
All right.
So what is the pleasure of the board in these, in getting these surveys?
How many, how many total did they say that they discovered when they looked at their maps, thirty-two?
Twenty-four, I believe.
Twenty-four?
That's with possible encroachments on all boundaries, not, not the Cowdery alone.
What would that cost, the town?
No idea.
I mean, I, I mean, we know what it's going to cost to do that one.
Well, again, you're not, they don't always come up that you have to do it. So we've, we've issued letters to people who have removed things because either they agreed or it just wasn't, it just wasn't worth it. They didn't dispute the boundary. So it's only, you only have to do it if people dispute it and you really feel that there's a big encro, I mean, then you got to make a decision, is it worth doing?
Well, in cases like this, and I know this guy's going to dispute, or this guy's already disputing it, this other one here too, where the line almost goes through the guy's house, I think it's really important to do a survey because we're talking about taking away a guy's driveway, most, you know, a big chunk of his land. In this case, we're going to take away enough land, he won't even have a place for a driveway and maybe have to move part of his roof according to that red line. You know what I mean? So I think it's really important that we do some due diligence and make sure before we, you know, impose that kind of hardship on somebody, that we're doing the right thing, that we're, that we are, they are in fact on our prop. So I, I'm all for it, is what I'm saying.
I completely agree with that sentiment. G I S maps are, they are prone to error, they're not, they're not exact. And just based on the encroachments we see in this small area for the other properties, they all look to seem to be off about the same amount. So it wouldn't surprise me if we go out there, we do the survey and we may find some encroachment, but not as dramatic as, as shown in the G I S maps.
Mr. Franco?
Yeah, I just want clarity on, on this, since I just want to make sure we're talking about the same stuff here. There's, it's sixty-five hundred dollars to perform the partial boundary survey of the three possible encroachment boundaries. And then an additional fifteen hundred to actually stake in those subject three encroachment boundaries, right?
Yep.
Okay. But was there discussion or suggestion to survey beyond these?
Oh, this is what the quote is for.
All right, okay. I'm clear. Thanks.
Mr. Jeffrey?
Yeah, I'm not in favor of this proposal. I, my concern is not the encroachments and the possible encroachments. My concern is the twenty-four other violations that have been identified. You know, I, as I said before, and I went to a Conservation Commission meeting and, and I said it there as well, that it would be nice if there was a process by which they methodically looked at those property lines. It sounds as if they have implemented that process to methodically look at these boundary lines. What I don't know the answer to is how many of these twenty-four violations are they going to then pursue a survey for? I'd much rather do it at the same time as a comprehensive set of, these are the violations, these are the areas, you know, here's the information, let's move forward, rather than a piecemealed approach. I know that this violation's been in existence for a while, or the alleged violation's been in existence for a while. I do understand that it's looking at three different properties, but are we prepared to spend, you know, if, if we're going to spend, if out of the twenty-four, if we're doing three, if every three is costing us eight thousand dollars, that's sixty-four thousand dollars. Are we going to spend sixty-four thousand dollars on surveys this fiscal year? I mean, if the answer is no, then how much money are we going to spend on surveys this fiscal year? If that answer is fifteen thousand, twenty thousand, I think we should be a little more strategic about which ones we're going to address, not just the first one that kind of popped up.
Can I leave a comment?
Absolutely.
I, I would say, I think for the town, I think it would be easier to do a piecemeal, put together a plan as far as looking at each of the different conservation properties and working it that way and working it into the budget as far as what's needed for survey work each year, going in, in a comprehensive plan with all twenty-four locations. Right now, we're focused on the Cowdery property and that's why I think this one makes sense to go forward at this time. And moving forward, we can address each of the other properties.
I can, I can accept that approach and that rationale. Are these all the violations on the Cowdery property that were identified?
Yes.
Okay. So there's, they're not coming back with the eastern boundary and here's four more?
No, looking, and that's using our G I, G I S software.
Okay.
Personally, I am for supporting this Conservation Commission. We, you know, we appoint them to do these kind of looks and that things don't come up altogether. So you made a point that they took to heart, so they looked at it larger, so they got twenty-four, they'll address them as they come, you know. Unless somebody is showing me intentional, intentional nature that they're avoiding certain ones and doing other ones, you know, they're going to, they're going to come up in a specific order. If they can group them in properties that bound this conservation land and this conservation land, that's fine. But eventually, I agree with town manager, we're going to need to do them, you know, in some kind of order, but it's going to have to be serial. We're not going to be able to do them all at the same time. And also, the violations that are alleged may not be the same or as egregious in some areas as others. So I'm going to leave it for the Conservation Commission to, you know, make that determination. And unless I disagree with their determination, which somebody would have to show me that they're being egregious in their determinations, then we'll just take them as they come up. Okay, so I'll attend a motion that we approve the survey now of four, the three potential encroachments against the Cowdery property. For the eight thousand dollars, sixty-five hundred, which is for the partial boundary survey, and fifteen hundred for the staking of those potential areas. So moved. Who have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion?
Thank you to the town manager for that additional input that has persuaded me.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None. Excellent. Discussion on revised requests for proposals for the Landscape Architectural Service for Thirty School Street. So of course, we, we found out last week that there were no submittals for our RFP and town manager gave, I guess the assistant town manager did, surveyed the people who had taken out the RFPs or requested the packages and we had some responses about why. And so we are looking to resubmit this and address some of the concerns. The major concerns being that there was the inclusion of Task Three, which is construction documents, which I think was way more ambitious and then should have been included. And also the deadline for this fall instead of maybe next annual town meeting. So I think we should, at least on its face, those two things should be removed. We should resubmit it or re-advertise the RFP with a later date and also the removal of that task so that we get back conceptual drawings, you know, architected concept plans at which we can choose one and then go to construction documents.
Read.
Did I sum, sum up that?
Yes, you did.
Okay.
Yes.
Were we voting on this?
Yeah, I'd like to vote on it.
Yeah. The only thing I would also add was Task Two, which is the design development, that may be a little extensive as well, as far as the, what we have for an appropriation. And like to hear input on that.
I agree with you, I mean, frankly, based on the budget we have now, I think we may get Task One done, but personally, I'd like to see this put out just to see if we can get some pricing on it. So if we have to go to special town meeting for an additional appropriation, we do.
Right.
Okay.
What page, if you can zoom in?
That is page five.
Okay. Page, no, Task Two, you said, that's page eight.
Task Two is on page...
Eight.
Okay, my tracked version says five. Are you looking at the tracked version?
So I'm not sure what your additional recommendations are to the town manager.
Is it in tonight's? I don't have a track number two. I have a revised RFP.
Oh, I'm sorry. You're right.
Is there another version?
No, there's not. I'm looking at an old version.
Okay. What?
That's it.
Okay. Yeah, so with those revisions, I think, you know, again, we want to get this to the next step. I know it's, so does everybody agree with that?
Agree.
I agree. I, I was asking to the town manager if she can, if you can clarify what you're asking us about Task Number Two.
Essentially that the scope under Task Two may exceed our appropriation.
And so what area do you recommend cutting back on? Because the scope is cover sheet, copy of existing conditions, demolition plan, layout materials plan, grading, drainage plan, lighting plan, utility plan, landscape improvement plan, and construction details. So yeah, that is a bit beyond the scope. So you're asking us to talk about where we think?
Yes.
Got it.
Right on.
Well, the cover sheet's probably going to stay. I, I think it's important for us to add a, you know, come out of this with some awareness. I don't know about the utilities, that this maybe not, and if that's necessary, but, I don't know. I'll defer to, to Todd on this.
You know, one of the thoughts I had was that, you know, maybe we have them do Task One, the site analysis and schematic design and come up with a proposal for what they feel is appropriate plans for, you know, the second, the design development stage. So they can tell us, come up with a proposal for, for the next phases of work.
Yeah.
So then they, so we're, they don't say, well, we don't even know if we're going to need a lighting plan or a utility plan and what structures we're going to need, or if they think we do, based on the input we give them on the concepts, they say, okay, based on all this stuff, here's your proposal for the next phases. So then you can get those, you know, appropriations for those at annual town meeting or special town meeting.
Yeah, I think that's a great idea.
For deliverables for Task One, since if we're looking at final, a final product for that, should that include narrowing it, coming back and narrowing it down to one concept plan that can be presented? Not inclusive of everything that goes along with Task Two, just narrowing it down to one concept plan?
I think so. Well, I guess after, yeah, I mean, I guess we only have to fill one after we, after plant, you know, Task One, which is where we would talk more openly and maybe, you know, thumbnail a few things, we could select that, maybe after a public hearing.
Yeah.
That we could select one and then focus in on it.
If it's, if they're going to have a deliverable of, of one concept plan based on, after our public meetings, I think that will certainly, we have a much better chance of delivering Task One in the appropriation that we have.
Yep.
And that would also probably budget for development of a proposal for future work to be incorporated in it as well.
Right, because if you narrow it down to one concept plan and then they have to provide a proposal for, based on that one concept plan.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll for that.
Okay. All right, I have direction.
So you'll provide that at the, our September eighth meeting, seventh meeting?
Seven.
For clarity, if I could, are you, because I'm getting lost between Task One and Task Two here. You're, you're talking about reducing the scope of Task One to present one concept plan? Do I have that right?
No, to come, to present two plans.
Yep.
The board decide on one plan.
Okay.
And then they include a proposal as part of that based on that one plan.
Aye, okay, understood.
Which was what would be, what would we would need next?
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I don't think we need to vote on that because you're going to resubmit the RFP before you, before you publish it, right?
Yes.
Okay, so let's put that on the September seventh agenda.
Do we, so we're going to talk about timeline as well?
We can, sure.
So really, all I need is when you would want a finished product and I'll work, I'll try to work out a timeframe backwards.
November sixteenth.
Where, where is it in the document?
That's towards the front of the document. It's on page three.
Responses due...
Page four, yeah. Keep going. Section two, one point four, bid schedule, right there.
There we go. Well, that's when their proposals are due.
But it works down, so they wouldn't need that last, last checkmark, that would be eliminated because that was really related to Task...
But this is the bid schedule.
No, it's telling them when we anticipate a contract award, when... No, it's telling them when we anticipate a contract award, when they would.
So we want to fill, we want to fill these things in, based on our discussion?
Yes.
Okay. So, when do you, based on our discussion here, do you think, when do you think we can advertise, Heather, because then we get to work from the advertisement date through the rest?
Right, right after it's approved on the seventh, so it would be probably.
First week in October?
For. Second week, because it's, it would have to go into the publication, and it's actually not published until the following week, so.
So it'd be due on, let's say, what, ten, just, ten fourteen or something like that?
Yeah.
Okay, anticipate dates for interview views, well, that's.
Yeah, I don't really, I can fill in those dates if I know when you want a finished product by.
I mean, based on, just based on where we are in the year, I think this is gonna, we want a finished product before annual Town Meeting.
Right.
And I think we have ample schedule for that, so, I mean, I, I would think a hundred and twenty days from bid date should be a reasonable amount of time for them to get the work done.
Yeah.
I mean.
I mean, you figure this is gonna be, more or less, for the appropriation, appropriation we have, about two hundred or so hours, so for one person, that's a month work, considering they have multiple other projects, and they can space this out, so this is probably two to three months, plus scheduling meetings and public meetings with us, so I think four months seems like a reasonable amount of time.
I would agree with you, so, I was, so we could say, what, March first?
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, from my standpoint, it could, I mean, if we're gonna put, potentially, if we know we're going okay, we could put in a placeholder.
Yeah.
And, just so we get it on the warrant, because we can always yank it from the warrant if we don't think we're getting anywhere, or we don't have a product we want to move forward, so, we don't, we don't have to worry about bumping up to it, but I think the latest it can be is like, you know, end of March is like the absolute latest the final product can be, but really, it should be, we should aim for March first.
Okay.
And most of this stuff is not, you know, you may have to come back to the site one other time, two other times, most of this stuff is going to be somebody just conceptualizing with our talks, so.
We do have a lot of information that we're already providing.
It's gonna be desk work, not field work, for the most part.
Agreed.
Yep. Okay, did I give you enough information?
Yes, thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, approval of August third, August tenth, and August fif, seventeenth minutes, does anybody have any changes that they want to cite in these? Hearing none, I am not in that one, so I will entertain a motion that we approve the minutes of August third and August seventeenth.
So moved.
A second?
Just as a point of order, can I?
You are not present on the.
Right, so we, we have to break them all out separately, since I can't, I can vote on the third.
All right, yes, all right, so let's do it, so.
Withdraw.
Motion to approve August third, twenty twenty-one.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, none, okay, motion to approve the minutes of August tenth, I am absent of this meeting, so I will not be voting.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, none, and, the minutes of August seventeenth, twenty twenty-one, where Mr. Franco was not present, motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, none, okay, so sign the ones that are appropriate to you. Warrants, no warrants today, wow.
No.
What happened? Action items, any action items? Any committee reports?
TCP meets tomorrow, five thirty.
Anybody else have any committee reports?
MPO is canceled.
Economic Development Committee meets on Thursday.
Okay, is it in person or Zoom?
In person, yes.
Here?
Six P M, Ritter.
The Ritter, Billy, okay. Okay. All right, we have no meeting, next week, next Tuesday being the last Tuesday of the month, we have no meeting, so our next meeting is September seventh, before then, I wish everybody a happy Labor Day.
You as well.
Any public comment from the public? Any public comment from the Board? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move to adjourn.
Who have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, none, good night, everyone, we will see you in two weeks, and until then, take care of yourselves, take care of each other, thank you, good night.